Can you hear me?
Well, then, um, when you came down on the Douglas County side.
And we can hear you too.
Probably the most major property on the right that had a bunch of cars and a museum and all that stuff. That's where I live. That's my grandfather's property. Yeah, that's called Tyson Tyson Road. Yep. My Uncle Steve lives at the end of that. And I live, uh, two more houses on your right after that road. Actually, three. That's right.
And sometimes, you know, coming back late at night on a Sunday night, drive from Daniel's Hill all the way over the mountain to.
Trail.
Yeah.
That's right. Those are the good news. I can always tell when there's a breakdown on I five, when I start having, you know, you know, just our motto of cars going, you know, semis and you're wow, what's happening?
Wasn't too many years ago, there was a log truck turned over, like, during the straightaway. And so you have to turn and go down off the road into a driveway around through Guy's yard and back up on the road. I'm thinking, how do you turn a log truck over a little straight street?
Yeah, a couple of years ago, that bridge they redid, there was a car that, I don't know how it happened, but I looked up there and he's upside down on that bridge. Must've been going too fast. But yeah, out in, you know, out in the middle of nowhere, you sometimes get weird wrecks.
So, yeah, that's, uh, so you did find the town of Tiller.
My loyalty is here. So where I live, we call that area Drew. And Drew is different than Tiller. It was always a distinction between Drew and Tiller. So, yeah, I live in Drew.
Well, my, my dad, when he was a young man and all his brothers and stuff, they spent a lot of time up on the south.
I believe at six o'clock, we have a quorum of the board. I think we ought to just double check. Can you hear me out there? This is Phil. Okay, good. I think we ought to start.
It is six o'clock of the evening. We're at the Butte Falls District ninety-one Elementary Gym for a school board meeting.
Can't hear Steve.
Hold it down for a second. Hold it close to you. I'll share this.
All right. I did hold it down. All right. It is six o'clock, May the tenth. We're at the Butte Falls School District Elementary Gym for a school board meeting. And we will do a call to order, roll call. I see. Stephanie Pitts on Zoom. She's there. And Mark Carlton.
Dan Murphy.
Steve Nelson.
Aaron's up.
So.
I'm here.
Aaron's there. And we have Aaron Warman also.
I'm here.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll go to one point three, agenda review and approval. I believe we have some modifications to the agenda, Dr. Long.
Yes, uh, turn Nelson. First of all, I would ask that the, the agenda be amended. And for three point one, instead of having Butte Falls Charter School and Natural Resource Center, uh, Mr. Mathis will not be here this evening. That we add the item, uh, action item to approve, uh, new high, a new principal for Butte Falls Charter School. Uh, we'll be sharing the recommendation on that for board action. And then under six point, add a six point two, um, resignation of our sixth grade teacher, Skyler Harrington for board action to accept that. And I believe Stephanie, you also had a, an item you wanted to, for us to add, maybe under new business.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, discuss and talk about a superintendent evaluation timeline.
And that would be five point one.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I don't know of any other changes, so just a, a motion and a second and a vote on that would help.
So I need a motion to amend our agenda to change three point one. Instead of a report from Mr. Mathis, we do an action item to approve hiring a new principal. Then we go to five point one. Uh, superintendent evaluation timeline. Uh, and then we add six point two resignation of Skyler Harrington, uh, one of our elementary teachers. So do we have a motion to change our agenda to that?
Also make the motion.
Murphy makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mark Carlton makes the second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So now we go to. Consent agenda, two point one, correction, approval of the regular meeting minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and the budget committee meeting minutes for May third, twenty twenty-one. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to the minutes, either for the school board meeting and or the budget hearing?
Nope. I make a motion to approve both the minutes of the school board meeting, April twelfth, and of the budget meeting on May third.
We have a motion by Stephanie Fitz. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Dan Murphy second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. So we have that done. Uh, we'll go to three point O, communication reports, three point one. Uh, approve hiring new principal, Dr. Long.
Um, I shared some information with the board in an email yesterday afternoon or evening, but I wanted to share that into the record because I know that. Um, um, many of our patrons, parents, students who are very much interested in this action item. Um, this afternoon, about three fifteen, I also was able to introduce this recommended, uh, principal appointment to our staff. We had about, uh, about half our staff were able to come for a voluntary stand-up meeting, and that lasted about thirty minutes or so. Good conversation. Um, so I just want to read this in and, and share it with you. Uh, I am bringing to the board an action item to approve the hiring of a new principal for Butte Falls Charter School effective July one, two thousand twenty-one. A little bit of process, uh, before we came to the conclusion to recommend this person, I completed all the reference checks. He was our first place unanimous finalist for the principal position. I checked with references in the three school districts where he has served as a teacher or a school administrator. And they confirmed he is a high-quality person, a competent and caring administrator, and that he has a heart for serving students and families in small rural communities. Um, also, as part of the process, I had our human resources director check with the Teacher Standards and Practices Commission. And found that he has maintained his teaching and administrative licenses in good standing with no disciplinary issues. That's a very important thing to have plumb and square when we go to hire anyone. So we check on every licensed person with T S P C. While I've completed that process, I'm bringing, uh, my recommendation to you. I'd like for you in person to meet Mr. Jesse Jackson. Jesse grew up in a small rural Douglas County community. He attended and graduated from the Days Creek School District. That's Jackson, that's Douglas County School District number fifteen. After high school, he went into the job market. For five years, he managed upscale manufactured home communities in Palomar, Oregon, and Pueblo, Colorado. Gained valuable business experience in budgeting, analyzing profit-loss statements, and receiving awards from the corporate headquarters as manager of the year, four-time quarterly excellent award winner, and things similar. It was his desire to serve others, however, that brought him back to Oregon to attend college and to obtain a teaching license. Jesse enrolled at Oregon State University where he majored in both anthropology and archaeology and education. During that time, he participated in a summer archaeological bid sponsored by Oregon State University. His instructor and field director remembers his willingness to roll up his sleeves and to work hard until tasks were done completely and correctly. Jesse graduated with honors in two thousand thirteen, receiving two bachelor's degrees and obtaining, uh, a preliminary teaching license in social studies for grades pre-K through twelve. He has since upgraded that license to a professional teaching license in social studies, pre-K through twelve. Jesse began his teaching career completing his student teaching at Jefferson High School in Jefferson, Oregon. Even then, his teaching supervisor saw, and these are quotes, that he demonstrated a mature, knowledgeable approach as an educator. She noted that Jesse was able to form trusting relationships with his students by being respectful as well as humorous. He has a positive command of the classroom and has always presented himself as confident. Beyond his strategies of differentiation and multiple intelligences, Jesse's lesson plans were well thought out and engage, and engaging. He was always very organized and ready to teach. I include these statements because they are consistent from what I heard from his references from all three school districts where he has worked. Whether as a global studies teacher at, in Warrington, Oregon for one year, or teaching all the social studies courses at the high school along with electives in anthropology, cultural studies, personal finance, and senior project at Days Creek for five years, or serving in his first assignment as principal at Glendale High School, two years. Jesse's commitment to serving people and attending to the details has distinguished him as an educator and a person. While working full-time at Days Creek, Jesse completed a master's degree program in education administration at Concordia University in Portland. And he obtained his initial administrative license in two thousand eighteen. Opportunity called him to Glendale where he has gained two years of in-the-trenches administrative experience. One of the questions we asked all candidates in the interview was, why Butte Falls? Jesse's response was clear and straightforward. He said he had been hearing about our school for several years. He was impressed by the hands-on, uh, on the focus on hands-on learning and natural resources. He said he lives on the Tiller Trail highly and that his family activities have brought them more to the Rogue Valley than to the Umquah Valley in recent years. Of course, the clincher was that he discovered the Medco ponds for fishing and enjoys bringing his young daughter there. He also said that he believes our school is a place where he can grow and learn and serve others for many years. He is willing to make that level of commitment. That is what he has learned from his professional journey. About two months ago, I surveyed our staff about the upcoming process for hiring a new principal. I asked them four questions. One, what are the things you most value in a principal or supervisor? Two, what are the things that are of most concern to you as we recruit and select a new principal for Butte Falls Charter School? Three, can you think of anyone in this region that you think would or could be a good fit as principal for our school? And four, is there anyone out there that might be interested in applying, but that you would prefer not to have as your principal or supervisor? In a nutshell, here is what I gleaned from their responses. One, select someone who wants to be here for a while. Make sure they have some credible teaching experience, preferably in a small school district or two. They need to like people. They need to be a good listener and connect with students and staff in our community. Choose someone who understands the traumas that many of our students have experienced. Someone who is solid on special education and the importance of effective academic interventions and social emotional supports. Find us a leader who is consistently fair, someone who can see the big picture while helping us attend to the day-to-day work. Hire a good communicator who can trust that we are working hard to do our jobs well, but who can also provide constructive feedback in a professional, credible manner. He is a thoughtful, kind, honest, firm, positive, trustworthy, encouraging leader. Fortunately, no one asked that he walk on water, but just about everything else is at a very high standard. I would like to report to the board, I believe this mission is accomplished. I believe Jesse Jackson is that person. He is the unanimous first choice finalist of our interview team. His references checked out with no discrepancies. This is the only place he was willing to apply for, as he still has, has opportunities in his current district. He wants to be here, and he knows where the good fishing is. So for this reason, I would ask that you take action now. He made arrangements to come meet the staff today. Um, it's been a long day because he did principal in Glendale, and I'm hoping that, um, after your action, we can send him on his way home so he can spend a little time with his family. Just as a caveat, one of the joys today at our staff meeting is we were all able to sing to him happy birthday because it is his birthday as well. So my recommendation motion would be to approve the selection and hiring of Jesse Jackson for the position of Butte Falls Charter School Principal effective July one, twenty twenty-one. And I certainly am open to any questions or comments from the board. And Jesse can say a few things too in a minute.
Murphy, any questions, comments?
No comment.
Steffi?
Oh, happy birthday, Jesse. And, um, just knowing how thorough you are, Dr. Long. I know that a good process was in place, and it looks like he meets all the criteria and checks out. So welcome, and I'm on board with the decision.
Thank you very much.
Mark?
Uh, no comments.
I, um, you know, based on. The information and Dr. Long's recommendation and stuff, I'm, uh, pretty happy that, uh, we have Jesse that's interested in our school. And so with that, I, um. Do you have any comments, Jesse? Any words of wisdom or?
No, I just want to say thank you. It, it truly is an honor to be here in Butte Falls. Um, Dr. Long is right. I, I didn't apply anywhere else, and I don't want to be anywhere else. Um, and so I just, uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity. Yep.
Okay, thank you much. So do we have a motion to hire Jesse Jackson as our. Principal for the Butte Falls Charter School effective July first, twenty twenty-one?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Mark.
Second.
We have a second from Dan Murphy. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, so it's unanimous.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Jesse.
Thank you.
Welcome on board.
Thank you very much. It's, uh, I, I can't wait to get to work. We've already, uh, got to look at some of the grounds today, and, um, there's a, there's a lot of potential in this district. It's evident.
Thank you, and you'll drive safely home now.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go on to three point two, superintendent report updates, Dr. Long.
First of all, I do want to say that we had originally planned to, to the, uh, Natural Resource Center before a meeting. Hiring a principal, and so that became a priority. It's not that the Natural Resource Center isn't a priority. So I'm hoping we can schedule some time in the next month or so where the board can visit that and see the upgrades at the facility. That being said, um, Jesse spent about an hour and a half out there, um, talking with Chris Mathis about the types of opportunities for learning out there as one dimension of our high school. And I was really pleased that Chris took the time and could, they could talk, um, they could talk a lot of things. Jesse has knowledge about things that are going out there that even I don't have in terms of how to go about things, things educationally. And I think that's a great addition for a natural resource school. In your board packet, you have, uh, an end of April enrollment, uh, numbers. You can see that we are exactly where we were a year ago. Two twenty-six, as Rachel shared at the budget meeting last week, we built our budget this year, I believe, on two hundred and twenty students. So we're hoping that we're landing there ahead of that, that mix there. I would share with you, um. Actually, we had a whole business, something about reopening. The reality is, is we had a couple of families that were disappointed that we had to close because of the quarantine. And they, um, sought to enroll their students in, in neighboring district. Um, one of those families has since re-enrolled their children back with us because it's a hard transition. I do want to say this, I really do respect the role of parents in making decisions about their children's education. And yet we also want our families to know, we always welcome students back. We're glad when they're here. We want them to flourish wherever they are. So our enrollment probably will bump a little bit here as, uh, in the next, next accounting end of May. Additionally, I wanted to update you on the seismic, uh, project. Um, it, I know it's been kind of quiet, but it actually has been very noisy on the work end. We have a hundred percent documents now. The contractor has received those. Um, there are two concerns that he has raised that I just want to make the board aware of. I may need to make some decisions at the, on a short notice around these, but I want you to be aware, and I would welcome your feedback on them. First of all, um, we have seen a tremendous escalation in materials costs, particularly anything that's made out of wood. Um, and much of our project is about reinforcing walls, exterior walls with additional sheathing to make them seismically stronger. Um, so the good news is in the initial, uh, costing out of the project, we were, um, substantially below the total amount of resource that we have. But with the cost escalation, we aren't sure what that's going to mean. The second, um, we don't have control over that. I just want you to be aware, that is one of, one of the pressures on us. The other one is that there is a lot of work going on out there, um, with the cleanup of the, the fire, particularly in Phoenix, uh, Phoenix talent. Um, but just in terms of what's happening across our country with, with construction and all that. But in, in our area, the, the pressure is on companies that can do asbestos abatement. And in our elementary school, we have some interior walls that have asbestos in the, uh, I don't, I don't know if it's in the, 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 um, sheet rock. But it is in the mastic or the, the, the material that, that filled the mud is what I would call it, the, uh, the compound, the joint compound. And there, the requests from the contractors, there's any way they can get in here before June seventeenth to do that process. I've asked them to give me very detailed direction on what that would mean, is what areas that would impact. Because if it's a few areas, we might be able to move kids around and, and make sure it's a safe environment. Um, the, the, his concern is if we can't get that mitigation done soon enough, that will delay the whole project. And there's a lot of, a lot of competition for those, um, workers, so, uh, for that work. So, um, what I believe is I'll have more information within the next week, and I would communicate with the board outside of the meeting about where we're at. Um, to determine whether we make some adjustments to the school calendar, or we move some kids around or things like that. Because my concern is not at the beginning of the project, it's at the end of the project. Can we actually open up school on time? We do need to do this project. We have the funding. It's only going to get more expensive, but I, I wanted you to be aware of that. Other than that, I'm pleased with the progress that Z C S has done on the engineering. They did submit an additional proposal for some work that we need done that's outside the scope of the seismic project. Um, as I've shared with the board in recent months, um, I have concerns about the walkway behind the, the west end of the elementary building. Um, when it was originally put in, it was not A D A compliant, um, but it since has deteriorated. And we really need to have that re-engineered and have a, a, a four-foot wide sidewalk there that would meet all the standards. That takes some engineering and some drawings. I am directing Z C S to do that, and we'll apply some maintenance funds. We may need to tap some of our maintenance reserves to make that happen. I will keep you informed as I have more information on that. We do have grant funding for the security, uh, supports in front of the elementary campus and another grant source for replacing the chain link fence along the western end. And I'll be looking at getting bids on those to make, make that, those pieces happen too. And, um, other than that, and on the construction, those are my, my biggest concerns. Uh, down at the N R C, we're looking at finishing the rehab of the caretaker's house. There is asbestos flooring in the kitchen in there, and the, the way they encapsulated it changes the grade in that, that kitchen substantially from the rest of the, of the building. Um, this is the opportune time to get that out, and so I'm going to work with our contractor on the seismic project to see if we do some mitigation early on, if we can get that taken care of also. Along with the flooring in the women's staff restroom at the elementary campus. It's the one restroom that still has an asbestos-type flooring that we need to get out of there. So mitigating risks, taking care of, of things like that as quickly as we can and inexpensively, um, means that we don't have liabilities in the future. Any, any questions about any of the construction items?
So does the, by this construction feel that they can navigate? Um, you know, the pressures, uh, the building material, the contract people, everything else. Uh, are they saying that we may end up having to push later into the year to finish this, or?
I, I think their concern is, is if we, if we aren't ready to hit the ground running on July seventeenth with the next phase, if we
For June?
June. If, if we don't, thank you. If we don't have asbestos baited in time, we, it may be hard scheduling getting it done. Because there's a lot of competition for those contractors.
Okay.
So, um, or you pay a premium because they're working overtime on your project because they had their, you know, that's how you get them in. So I will, I should have more information by the end of this week on that and I will communicate with the board about that. But this is, this is where we got to make some hard decisions to, to get a project to push through and meet our timelines.
Okay. Uh, anybody have any questions, Dr. Long? Steffi?
Murphy?
No questions.
Okay.
I do, I do have an additional report. I did share this with the board, but I don't know that it's been reported out to the community. We were privileged to have a guest, um, at the Natural Resource Center a week ago. Governor Kate Brown in her Southern tour came and, and heard a lot, uh, uh, feedback from Southern Oregon residents about a lot of issues and, and you know, that's, uh, that's the reality of being a public official when, when you have responsibilities and have to make decisions. What I do believe is the, the two hours she ended up spending at our Natural Resource Center was a respite from some of the other things that are impinging on her right now because she got to talk to one of our soon to be graduates who has been greatly impacted for the good through the, her experience with, uh, natural resource theme in our school and is planning on going to college and actually at this point majoring in botany and as a career choice. She also, um, we hosted a meeting for the city, uh, regarding the acquisition of the four hundred acres around the city of Butte Falls. And so we had like ten or fifteen minutes before to talk about our school, but once the city meeting ended, the governor was overheard telling her aides, I want to see more here and I know I have time on my schedule. And she spent another hour and basically went through seeing what was happening in terms of projects and potential learning for students. And what I believe she took away from it is that all the hard work that's occurring here by our teachers, our staff and volunteers and the grant people who are investing in it, supported the board, is resulting in, um, hope for what many Western Oregon rural timber towns have struggled with. How do you rebuild your, your infrastructure, your economy, your, um, opportunity for students living in your town when you've been dependent on timber and that kind of goes away? And so, um, I, it was certainly an encouragement to all the staff members who were involved. Um, you were also there, Mr. Nelson, and got a chance to share with your concerns as a board member. But I just am really proud of the way our, our community represented itself to the governor. Regardless of one's political persuasion, when there's a person who's elected official and they have authority and influence, it's, um, you want to show them the good things that are going on as that may benefit your community. And I felt that everyone did that. So.
I, I agree and I, uh, I didn't know what to expect. I, I talked to the governor a little bit, but I think our people, our kids, our staff, uh, including the city probably represented the school and the people in the community as good as you could ask for. I think our student really did a wonderful job. And you have to give thanks back to our school for giving her that ability to do that. So anyway, I, I felt really good. And I think we had a chance to present our district and show what we're trying to accomplish. And I, I think it, uh, registered. So, uh, it's, it felt really good.
But, but the last item that I wanted to share with you is we have now completely received and completely deployed twenty six industry, industry standard air purifiers. I ordered one using emergency COVID money for every classroom, for every office. We have, uh, these are devices built by Austin Air. They cost around six hundred dollars. They essentially, uh, will turn over the air four times in a room of thirteen hundred square feet. They filter, um, airborne pathogens. They filter pothons, dust, odors. Um, there's a lot of benefits beyond just the concerns some people have around COVID. And, um, our teachers are using them in those classrooms where we've had to use two rooms for a grade level. Every room has one of these. Um, you, from here, you all can see there's a pallet over there of eight that were damaged when they were delivered. They've already replaced those and those have been deployed and we're just waiting for them to pick up the ones that were damaged during shipment. And in the end, um, it was worth the hassle because, um, there's fresh air exchange, uh, and air purification occurring in, in every classroom and that makes it healthier for everyone. So I wanted I wanted you all and, and anyone observing and parents to know that, that's happened.
Any questions, comments? Okay. We will go to three point three, review of payment of bills.
Good evening, everybody.
And we have Rachel Aiken via Zoom. Ready to answer any questions that there may be. Um, Mark, have you noticed anything?
No.
Steffi? No. Murphy?
Forget about Erin.
Alright, page one. Can you hear that?
Thanks for not forgetting about me, Rachel.
Page one, Cascade Athletic Supply. Are we going into sports now or acquiring something else?
That was in preparation of playing sports. I believe that we didn't have enough players to do. That was for some football supplies and some volleyball supplies. I believe that by the time that it came around, we didn't have enough students to, to fund those particular sports, but we have, um, we, it was for mouthpieces and such balls and stuff for anticipation to play those sports.
So we will store those and use those in the next sport season.
Alright, the bottom of page one, Hughles Incorporated.
That was for the elementary drain system?
I, uh, I can speak to that. Um, I hired Hughles to come out and to re, to inspect and remount, clean out the drain system that had been abandoned. That was the former gutter system. It's also the storm drain system of the, of the fields filter into that. Because part of the design for the retrofit, if they're able to reactivate that system, it will save substantially on costs and design allowed to expand the scope in some other areas to our benefit.
They all, it's drain lines for the elementary school.
It is. And then I had Hughles come back up because we had an issue with the actual drain uh, ditch on the southwest corner of the campus. And they came, if you go see, they scooped all that out. That bill hasn't cleared yet. But those two things are what Hughles has done for us.
Alright, page two. The last entries. Sentinel Technology.
That was for, uh, fire alarm inspections?
Both those bills, Rachel?
Yes.
Okay. On page five, I see the town showed up again with electricity and water. Where were those going to? Are those?
Those are at the community hall that we're renting for space due to, uh, uh, space constraints for students. So we rent in the community halls. So that's actually being charged to the S R grant.
So, Dr. Long, is that the community building, right? Part of the agreement on?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Long, on page six. The Project Youth Plus, is that doing the things that you want for this kind of money?
Absolutely. Um, that hire, that is a position. We were able to hire a person who works with, um, all the high school students around planning, uh, career planning. Um, there's some, uh, academic support for them also, and it's a contract. I think you pay every six months. This is one installment, I believe. That used to be called the College Dreams. They've re, re-branded themselves.
That is correct. That's the first half of, of their payment. Actually, no, that's their second half. We've already paid their.
And the last one is Cascade Athletic Supplies on page seven at the top.
Um, there was a bill that was outstanding that got dropped from, because you're a cash district. This happened at the end of June and then when it went into July, it, there was a, there was a timing issue. So that bill ended up getting missed. So that was actually, um, a bill from last year for some volleyball shirts that was paid out of their student body account.
Thank you. That concludes, Mark.
Okay. Um, we will go to three point four, financial summary. Mrs. Aiken?
Yeah, I just want to say it's only taken me about three and a half, four years, but I finally figured out which ones that Mr. Murphy's going to ask me on because I already had all those already pulled.
We'll see.
He's getting predictable. Um, so I don't really have a lot except for, um, things are very steady as far as the financials are concerned. Um, I can tell you that you do have a positive May adjustment that's coming. Um, your positive May adjustment is going to be twenty four thousand nine thirty four. Um, and you also would get a payment for your high cost disability, which is, um, a percentage of the cost that we do for any students that are high cost. And that amount's going to be, um, just over twenty thousand dollars. So you'll see that in your May payment on, on the May financials. Other than that, you guys look really good with a very healthy ending fund balance, which is helping our budgeting process for next year. But other than that, I do not have a lot.
So it would probably be whoof us to watch the money in case of cost overruns or expenses with the earthquake retrofit for the elementary school.
Yeah.
Yeah. We did set aside a small dollar amount for that, um, and due to our circumstances that we had around the high school retrofit, I did anticipate having to or doing some work based on, oh, we have the opportunity to do this or do, to do that during that timeframe. So I did set some money aside for that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Three point five Charter School Staffing Update. Mrs. Gorman?
Yeah, actually I do have a little bit of update about the sports. Um, I was working with Mr. Hedrick today. We may be able to pull off a short basketball season. Um, that would start next week. It would only run for five weeks. The, um, and the games, because our county is still in red, it's likely that we would allow no spectators. But they would still travel to each other's gyms and play. So we're right in the middle of seeing if that can happen and, um, we'll, we'll update you more as we go. Okay?
Now, when you say basketball, would that be boys and girls?
We're currently finding out if we have enough girls that want to play. And those that don't want to play, they may be able to play on the boys team like we did before.
Okay, so this is all kind of in a state of flux then?
Yeah, and, and what it looks like is in a state of flux. So specifically, but we will be following all the guidelines through the O S A A. Okay, um, I also want to announce that we were approved for the summer school dollars. So just got the, the email today that our application was approved. So that is over a hundred thousand dollars that we get to spend on grades K twelve and, and offer all the support we need to get the students, especially the ones that are behind on their credits or got behind on their grade level. So our teachers will be making a list. And those, those that are most behind, they get priority and then we'll allow others in as space allows. So we're, we have a whole group, we have twenty four staff members who signed up to help with summer school. So we have a lot of support this summer. I also have Butte Falls Bulletin that we'll quickly go through. Um, of course, it says Happy Mother's Day on the front. Good timing. Uh, first couple pages are about the school partnership and some community resources at the landing, including the food bank. Uh, and some community food boxes on the next page and then some other things at the landing, like the clothing closet, N A and A A meetings, lots of resources there. Couple of pages about sticking with COVID guidelines and what those are currently from the CDC. Uh, the mayor's letter for May, a lot of information about prepping for the wildfire season. Clearly, our town is worried about the things like that happened at the end of last summer. So making sure that everyone is ready for the fire season. And then a few, a little more details about some spending freeze and the forest chat with Dawn Hammond. I was a little surprised, um, that she didn't share about the meeting that Dr. Long already shared about, but maybe that's, again, something that it is better left a little private. Um, town council meeting schedule is on here, just reminding people that they are doing Zoom meetings. And the dates that you can log on to those. Um, next page, a few more things about the landing poker night and ways to support the landing through Fred Meyer and Amazon. Of course, and a Butte Falls Community Bible Church ad and a recipe for some no bake cookies. Makes me hungry. I'm an edgerya. Karate at the, at the landing, which is awesome. Then there's a, another two pages front and back about the USDA T E F A P eligibility that has to do with some of the food bank stuff, I believe. They have it in English and Spanish. A list of people that helped the Big Butte Historical Society. That's their membership list. Um, last page for the community newsletter is, is a celebration for our dear beloved friend Yvonne who passed away in February. So that'll be this Saturday. Lots of planning going around that and Cory and I are the contacts for that. Then we get into the school part. Uh, we have some job opportunities, classified subs and bus drivers. And for the next school year, the elementary office manager and the custodian. And as you will discover later, we'll get to add two new ones on here after tonight. Um, but so it won't go out to the district, but about the athletic director and the sixth grade teacher will be added. And then of course, it's announcing today's meeting. And there was a meeting last Wednesday with parents, virtual parent engagement meeting that was hosted by Julie and Phil and I. And Catherine was there too. Thanks. And we got some good input from the people that showed up. Next page is Dr. Long's letter about us reopening full day every day, just letting the community know what, what that looks like and that we did have a short closure when we had some cases on campus. But that we were able to give parents a definite date that we were bringing students back. And I think that helped a lot of parents to know that, that it was the exact date we would have kids back. And it appears that, that we prevented any future spread of COVID because of that shutdown. And we're going to be staying on top of that. Sometimes we've had some kids come in not feeling well and we take care of that right away, have their parents come get them, isolate them. And as far as we know, there's no new cases. Thank you. And that, that was good to get that out to the community. And the most important page of all. Now, that was good to get that out to the community. And the most important page of all real school lunch menu. Very important. Any other questions?
No, I, I don't see anybody waving their hands or anything, so thank you, Diane. We'll move on to three point six E S S A Site Council Parent Involvement Report. Mrs. Freeman.
Hi all. So we did have, as Mrs. Gorman said, we had our parent engagement meeting on uh, May fifth. We didn't get a huge turnout, but we did our due diligence, and we're going to do some more of this. So it was a really good learning experience. We're going to be posting that meeting. We recorded it on Zoom, and we'll be posting it on our website with some more information about our S I A and title funds. And I'll be meeting this Thursday with our um, team helpers from S O E S D to kind of move, to help us move forward for our next two years of spending in the S A A funds. That's it.
Hey, any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to three point seven Butte Falls Community School Partnership Report. Mr. Murphy.
Diane covered it well in the bulletin. That has all our information in it.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll go to three point eight public comment. Do we have any public comment? No written stuff, right? Okay. We'll go to four point oh, old business, four point one, school reopening. Dr. Long, update.
Well, well, I talked about this briefly, and you saw my letter when we reopened for the second time. I, one of the pieces of information I wanted to share with you is just the numbers of, of kids who were serving on campus and then those that are doing distance learning. We have thirty-nine different students who are not coming to our campuses out of two hundred and twenty-six. So that means we have a, I'm trying to do the math now, hundred and eighty-seven students who are on campus of our two hundred and twenty-six. And we'll have a couple more coming back starting tomorrow, I think. Um, that is not atypical in some larger districts. Uh, I think Portland, Salem. They're just starting to move back to hybrid right now. So the advantage of being small is that when we can open back up, we can open back up. I am really grateful to our students for just going with it. And um, you know, I mean, we're sitting here in a meeting, we got masks on, and this is uncomfortable on one level. On the other hand, um, I'll do anything I need to do to make sure that kids could be in school, and, and I, I appreciate that support from families and the community, so.
Yeah. So are we providing support for the kids that are staying at home?
Yes, we are. We modified our schedule, and we release our students at three o'clock rather than having the buses run an hour later, so that our teachers can provide some personalized support for those kids every day. We also are having our aides check in, and we're doing some interventions with those kids virtually still. It's not quite what we had before. There are a couple of grade levels where the teachers have been able to make the accommodation that the students at home can actually join the class throughout the day and participate in lessons, but that's hard at some age levels. So um, what I appreciate is the families that are hanging in and staying connected to us, even though they're still uncomfortable having their child come back to school. Or in some cases, they've gotten into a routine that for their child, it's actually been a calmer experience for them, and that seems to be working for them. I don't know that we're going to be able to continue that next year. I think the rules may change. And we won't be able to do distance learning next year, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. In the meantime, we just try to make our schools as safe as possible. Um, I did see in the news today that the Pfizer vaccine has now been approved to vaccinate children aged twelve and older. And as a public health uh, request, um, we need to make parents aware of that for those who are willing to pursue that. There's plenty of vaccine out there, and it's a matter of, of making that choice, so.
Has there been any comment of the clinic here in town being a facilitator or?
Yeah, I think they ran a clinic once already, didn't they? Yeah, and, and I, I suspect that um, it's rogue community health, isn't it? Um, we'll be looking at options like that. I know in some places, even uh, stores, I heard of a, I heard of a hardware store that was running a vaccine clinic, but you know, it's about making sure you can get properly take care of the vaccine and have it accessible to people who want to access it. So, okay.
Okay, um, we'll go to five point oh.
So, on the national level and at the state level, the, if you watch the news, we don't have to wear masks outside anymore. I believe in this state they're still requiring kids to have masks on all day. Is that true?
Um, I think, I think that.
They're, they are allowed to take mask breaks outside, and we, at the different grade levels, we have addressed that as appropriate. So when they are outside, they do have an opportunity to take off their mask. Of course, they still have the social distance, and the teachers are managing all of that really well. So um, no, when, when they're outside, they have a chance to take off their mask. Okay?
Okay, there's various news reports that, you know, having our kids wear masks is spreading strep throat, all kinds of other bacteria. I guess what I'd love to see is we have to follow the state guidelines, et cetera, but this yo-yoing in the last couple of weeks of going back to extreme and restaurants shutting down, and then five to six days later, it can go back to high. It, it's a never-ending stressor, and there's a ton of data saying that our kids could probably get away with going back to school without masks, but if we could somehow, if it happens again, I'd love to see this district say no to the masks for the last month of school. Be the charter school, be something different, and stand up for something, and hold on to it to try to finish the year strong.
I, I think we learned some things from this recent two-week closure. Um, our record keeping actually was pretty good on where exposures would be. We've tightened some things up. If we had a COVID case come to school today, if it was a single case, I do not see that we would need to close down our school. We could probably do a much more targeted closure. It probably would be that grade level, is my guess. Um, we, we, we can't get around the fact that um, that we are accountable to the public health authorities, and this Department of Ed could sanction us. I don't know that they've sanctioned any public schools yet. Um, what we're trying to do is to follow all the guidelines, so that if COVID comes to school, we actually, it doesn't, that parents keep their kids home if they're not feeling well. We have not seen any, I don't know that we've seen any significant spike in strep or anything like that here, but our numbers are really small. So I don't know what's happening in the region. Lots of, lots of information out there, lots of sources of, of opinion and fact and dispute about which is which. For us, um, when our county goes to extreme now, we, we are under slightly different rules, and we follow the, the standards from the Department of Ed, which is why we're able to, we were able to open up even though it was extreme. And that's what we're gonna continue to follow is the O D E guidelines, which, when we follow them, are actually more permissive than, than the, the uh, what happens for businesses. I appreciate your concerns, though, truly.
I have a question, Dr. Long. If, if by chance all the restrictions got relaxed and uh, the mass social distancing, all, all the restrictions for being faced with got relaxed, are we prepared to go back like it was, is there?
If, if, if we have direction from the Oregon Department of Ed and the Oregon Health Authority that we can stop doing things, that's the permission to do it, and we definitely would follow those guidelines. I'm not gonna impose any higher standard than would be from.
Well, I just know earlier in the year, when they got relaxed, we had a transition period of weeks and weeks to
Sure.
to, to get to what the new allowance. And then um, I know there was concern from the unions on, on uh, whether it was safe or not. So have all, has all that been mitigated, that we're just waiting for?
We, we have, we meet all the standards now. Anyone who wanted to be vaccinated can be vaccinated. That should eliminate that concern. Um, I, I, I think the fact we were able to open up as soon as possible after the quarantine is our commitment to being as open as possible. And yeah, thank you. The really fair question. I will tell you, one of the changes that actually is more restrictive, they actually had relaxed for a while, that if you went a certain number of days and were tested and didn't test positive for COVID, then you could, the quarantine was ten days, not fourteen. They have made it fourteen for everything now. We, there's no, there's no shortcut, you know, and um, the, 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 the challenge of it is, is they have different rules if you've been vaccinated or not. But for children, children haven't been vaccinated yet. So the fourteen days is in play, in key, in play there, which is why we're really asking for, for parents to be extra careful if their kids aren't feeling well, because the consequence will be for every kid in that grade level. And those families, and so let's just be careful at home, and then we can have school. I'm really glad to hear kids outside. Go ahead, Aaron.
I have one more question. Do you foresee a uh, the colleges are going to it, they've officially said it, that, that you cannot return to college unless you have a vaccine. Do you foresee the next school year, a state requirement or a district requirement that if you're going to return in school, in person, to school in person, you must have proof of vaccine in our children?
I don't, I don't see that, because I think it runs up against the access to a free and appropriate education, and the hope is by then there'll be enough people who either have the immunity through having had COVID or they've been vaccinated that it is more like a bad flu, in terms of most people won't catch it. And um, it does mean that we probably still will have to have in place hand washing, which is never a bad idea, and using hand sanitizer. Um, I, my hope is that masks can go away and that we don't have, you know, I, I, I'm fully vaccinated. I choose to wear a mask for a couple of reasons. One is we still don't know what the whole science is on, can you spread it? But I'm also a superintendent of a public school, and I'm a role model, and I don't want someone to say, well, he's not, and the reality is, is I, I, I just, it's, that's my responsibility. I think we all have to make that choice individually. But I, my hope is, is that when we come back in the fall, no, we aren't like the colleges requiring it. Businesses can require it. I can't make it a condition of hire of employees, you know, it'd be convenient for me to do that, because but, but that's, you know, so I hope that answers your question, Aaron. I think that's where we're gonna be at.
Yes, thank you.
Any, any other questions, Colin? Steph?
Thank you all.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to five point oh, new business, five point one superintendent evaluation timeline. With that, I will, I think, we'll turn it over to Stephanie, since she kind of posed the the agenda item on that. Uh, comments or suggestions, Steph?
No, I actually might turn it back over to those of you that went to the um, webinar. I just, today's my last day on the board. So I just wanted this ball not to get dropped, because I know it's one of our main responsibilities. And I'm real lucky and fortunate to have a superintendent who really doesn't need evaluation, but it is legal and it is protocol. So I just wanna, I don't know what the new guidelines were that you learned from O S B A, but if we could just make sure we put that on the agenda when it's appropriate, and we stay on track with that, it's really where my plug was coming.
Yeah, and I would say from the webinar, what I saw, first of all, no matter how good or bad your superintendent is, it's always important to give feedback on a regular basis, because that's how small things stay small and don't get big. Um, but what we kind of saw was a different timeline for the evaluation to occur, and my thought on that is, is when we have a newly configured board in July, that might be the time to lay out what the, the timeline should be for that. And um, make sure that a- any new board members we have get some board training around that and their role as a board member, and then, then the board owns that as a whole. If that helps.
That's great. So just keep it on the agenda for me.
And by the way, Stephanie, um, since you, your life is moving on um, in terms of this role, I, I just want to tell you, I really appreciate your service, not only on the school board, but previously in, but relative to the charter. Um, um, that the separate entity that we had and your support for better learning for kids. It's, it's, life is busy, and you have a lot going on in your life, but I appreciated uh, when you were board chair, and even as a board member, that you'd come and, and try to find out what's going on and look for solutions, and just wish you well in your next chapter of, of raising your kiddos.
Thanks, Dr. Long. I appreciate it. Thanks for letting me serve, and you guys are a good team. You're making things happen. I'm still around, still a Butte Falls um, citizen, so yes, thanks. Round of applause.
So, Dr. Long, um, there were actually three of us that ended up um, viewing the webinar. There was yourself, myself, and then Dan Murphy also was included. And so the standards or some of the timelines uh, put out in the webinar from O S B A were maybe a little bit different than what we're used to, and it could end up to where you would evaluate partially through a year previous, and then have a summer, and then evaluate partial completion of the school year now. So some of the stuff that was to myself was not really satisfactory as to a good continuation as far as evaluation of, of a personnel or superintendent. Um, the other thing that came up was in today's environment, with all of the stuff with the, the COVID and the school closures and the changes of the education, uh, some of the evaluation standards were not basically valid, because you could have put goals out there, and, and then, and everything was a reaction with an unknown of a, of a pandemic. So um, I think we probably wouldn't hurt if we continued some thoughtful uh, standards, at least for the near future, as far as what we'd want to look at, or you know, uh, maybe some areas of concern that, with our particular situation. Um, so, you know, you, you mentioned maybe having, after July first, involving the new board to, what, set the standards or do an evaluation?
Well, it's a, the discussion, what I, what I actually think my recommendation to the board would be to look at an evaluation that would occur a bit in the fall. And, and it certainly, I don't have a problem with it looking back over the previous year. I mean, you're, you're giving, you're making an assessment of what's happened since the last evaluation, and some, some recommendations and, and commendations and recommendations of what needs to go forward. The second thing is, is in the midst of all this, we have stepped away from the board's other prime responsibility, which is around policy, and we are working with O S B A right now for an assessment of where our policies are. And I would say the board focusing on making sure we're get back on the policy update uh, calendar and focusing on giving, so how did things go this last year or so from our last evaluation? And what are the things we as a board want the superintendent to focus on going forward? That's a, I think that's a really healthy conversation to have in the fall and not wait till next spring. I'm fine with that. I, I, I think we're bringing a new principal on board. We're gonna be uh, looking at how we configure our administrative support for our program. Uh, we actually are understaffed administratively. We've grown by eighty students, you know, from where we were, and this year is going to be a year of transition. I, getting some feedback from the board in that process would be helpful. I also know because of COVID, there have been some hard things that we've needed to talk about, and it's not always been easy because of the proximity stuff we need to deal with, and, and I have appreciated individual board members being available to talk to me and share with me their concerns. So, so I, I don't feel like I'm been isolated from feedback from the board, but there are some probably higher level things about where we're going, the five-year plan needs The five-year plan needs to be updated, some things like that. And those are all healthy things for the board to be processing this fall.
Okay. So Mark is, have you got any thoughts on this?
No, and I apologize. I have, I haven't put much thought into it.
Okay. Murphy?
No, sir. No thoughts on it.
Um, Aaron? I don't see Aaron out there now. Oh, there he is. Um, I'm, I'm flexible as far as, yeah, you know, how are you going to evaluate something? It's, it's been a whole year of turmoil and stuff that we can't control. Uh, there will be some new board members coming on or a, a new type of board, whatever. Um, I would say maybe, let's see, we're in the middle of May. Um, you know, maybe we could think about stuff, you know, between now and June. If maybe some concepts or you could give us some ideas or we could possibly, you know, like OSBA might, might have some further guidance or something. Okay. Does that sound good, Aaron? Okay. Alrighty. Well, we've been working on it kind of. It's, it's been a little bit on the back burner. So. All right. We'll go to six point old personnel, six point one resignation of athletic director, Dr. Long.
Uh, Harry Hedrick was generous enough to stay connected with us as the athletic director this year, even though he had retired as a teacher. And it sounds kind of bizarre, but he's been working really hard, even though we haven't had it. He probably has planned for multiple, um, athletic schedules that never happened in an attempt to always be ready to start our programs up when we could. We, um, that's where we are now with a couple of things. We're around basketball. I think we have one or two kids who got to play baseball with over at Prospect. Um, but he is, he's ready to transition to full-time retirement. And so, um, we, um, are accepting his resignation. Wanted to make you aware of that, have you act on that. It is an extra comp position and then we'll post it. See if we can attract someone to that position for the coming year. I think Harry is willing to work with us on the transition as we bring someone new onboard.
Okay. So we need a motion to accept Harry Hedrick's resignation as athletic director, uh, effective?
Uh, June 30th.
June 30th of 2021.
I'll make a motion.
Mark makes the motion.
Second.
Do we have a second? Murphy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Julie. Um, Stephanie got booted off and she's going to try to rejoin. There she is. Okay. She did not get a chance to, uh, vote on that.
So is she there or not there?
Yep. There she is.
Okay. Is that a I to accept Harry Hedrick's resignation?
Yes, I. Sorry about that.
All right. I wasn't sure if you hung up on us or what the story was. So, okay. Thank you. So we have a unanimous, uh, five ayes. Okay.
I did hang up on you, but I didn't know that I did. So I'm.
So we go to six point two resignation of Skylar Harrington.
Yes, um, I received an email, Diane, and I did about a week and a half ago from Skylar. And, um, rather than respond to an email, I, I really wanted to talk to him in person. And we had a really good conversation last Thursday at the end of the workday. Um, he very complimentary of his time here. He's in a transition in life and he had an opportunity to pursue something different for him. And, um, I, all losses, we're losing a really good teacher who's been great with kids and also really helped us with music. I think it's been hard not having music the last year and a half. That's where his heart is. And, um, we wish him well. I'm not sure that he fully has secured what he's going to do next, but he was confident. And he said, I, I said, I want to make sure you're going to land. And he said, I, I am. And, and you can take it to the board. So that's why I added this. This allows us if you, well, he's resigning and we've accepted it, but to take action on it will allow us to post the position and be looking for a teacher, which we need a, a new teacher.
So do I hear a motion, uh, to accept Skylar Harrington's resignation as of June 30th, 2021?
I'll make a motion.
So Mark makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Murphy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're losing a good one.
Yep, we are.
Yeah.
So we have.
Reluctantly.
We have five ayes to accept his resignation.
I have, I have this general question.
Sure.
When we hire teachers, what, like to replace him, is there standards and qualifications? And is it because we're a charter or is it different than?
Um, we have some flexibility there, but our goal always based on what we want to have is a mix of a license versus, uh, uh, registered teachers as we will post it. And we'll try to hire a T S P C licensed teacher for that position. Yeah.
Can I speak to that?
Please.
We actually can only hire registered teachers for, you can't have registered teachers doing core.
For core areas.
Classes. So we have to hire a T S P C teacher to do like the math and the language arts and the social studies and the science, the core, the core thing. So.
He just had extra talents because of the music.
Right.
Yeah.
But if it's not a core, they don't have to be a licensed teacher?
Correct. We have several registered teachers who are teaching in non-core areas.
So what's the difference between registered?
Um, they are sponsored by the district where we certify that they have the skillset in the area that they're going to teach. And T S P C vets them and approves them. And so they have a, they have a license or permission that is specific to our school. They can't actually go and pick a job somewhere else unless that school is willing to take them through the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then are they a member of the same union?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
And so the pay scale, everything is the same?
Um.
Between a license and a?
It, well, here's the deal. Um, they are a member of the association if they are a permanent employee. In the last year or so, we have used the registration process mostly for people in elective classes that are just like nine-week courses and we just do a renewing contract. So there is a pay scale for that, that I think is in variance.
Called temporaries. So they're not actually part of the same day. They start at the lowest pay scale for a teacher.
But we do have one registered teacher who's a full-time employee and that's Mr. Mathis. Yeah.
So a welding teacher would be an example of, of what you're talking about.
A registered teacher. If we hired them and have them teaching welding every, every term for years, they would, they could become a permanent teacher, yeah.
So math, science, social studies?
English, health.
Yeah, they have to, they have to be licensed teachers. Many, they went through a teaching program. They got their bachelor's plus their master's degree and then they go through T S P C to get their license. They've been through all those steps. A registered teacher just has to show some competency with us, either through some college or some training or some experience. And then we sponsor them. We go to T S P C and say, we support this teacher in our school to teach these specific things. And again, it has to be an area of expertise for them. Uh, but it doesn't qualify them to teach core classes.
Yeah, they are an at-will employee.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great question.
So we'll go to seven point oh, comments, future agenda items. Uh, I'll, I'll go to Aaron.
I'd like a update slash rundown on, we're only about four weeks away. I'd like to get a rundown on graduation and the plan and our role as a board. Steve and I exchanged a few emails on what it's going to look like. But if we could get a quick overview, please?
Okay, sure. We're, it's going to be similar to last year unless the county metrics come down. So we're, we're planning forward similar to last year where we allow each student to invite 10 or less people for in their little pod to be in the gym. Uh, we, we do want the board members there that are going to present. And I don't think we've fully decided who's doing that yet. Dr. Long has some thoughts. Um, you know, the, the teachers will be there, the students, their parents and some limited number of guests. And we, and we'll space them out accordingly. We do have, we should be able to allow a few more than last year because of that we only have to do the three-foot spacing now instead of the six-foot if people are wearing their masks, um, which they have to inside. That's just, I mean, that's a state regulation. So we should be able to fit more in, but it's still going to be limited. What other questions, Aaron, are you worried about?
No, not worried. Just wanted to know what the plan was. And unfortunately, after a year of dealing with this, the answers that I got there were, we'll have to wait and see. So to try to plan for it and have a number of, you know, what it's going to look like. I guess we'll know what a week before or what?
Um, unless something disastrous happens, I, I think we're planning for something similar to what we had last year. Um, I am involved in, uh, in a weekly or bi-weekly meeting, uh, with other superintendents that is sponsored by Senator Golden and Representative Walden, uh, Walden and Representative Dwayne Stark and is it Senator or Representative Marsh? I can't remember which house, which, and, and we've been having discussions specifically around graduation. Uh, we've been lobbying that it not be treated like a public event, but that it be treated under the rules for schools that would allow us very easily to do what we did last year. And they're receptive to that. I think they're putting pressure on the Department of Ed also. It seems that we had a lot of things in place last year when we did it that kept it safe. And yet, um, if there's any other freedoms we could have in that, we're, we're going to push for them for that event. Um, so, so it, no, it's hurry up and wait, uh, in the plan. We're planning for something similar to last year and then we'll probably be able to tweak the requirements at the last minute based on answers to those. But it's now in the hands of the politicians from both sides of the aisle.
And I'll end by saying, hasn't it been for a year? I'm done.
Thank you.
What's the date on graduation?
June 12th. It's a Saturday. Seven o'clock.
Seems like a few years ago, we had two or three inches of hail and snow out there and it was so cold, you couldn't stand to be outside.
Right. That's really why we want to do an inside, plan for an inside graduation. We don't want to hang in on that.
Okay.
Yeah, every time we planned for outside, we had to move it inside anyway. So may as well just plant it inside.
Hmm, okay.
Murphy?
What, what is the status of the pickup?
It has not been built yet. It has not, yeah, you're talking about the pickup that we ordered. Um, I haven't had any update from the Ford dealership on that, but people are suggesting buy used pickup, but the cost of used pickups have shot up too. And so I, I think at this point, we're trying to get to the point where Ford can restart its manufacturing line.
Did we formally accept Skylar's resignation?
I thought we did.
Hmm, yes.
I know we did Hedrick's, but did we do Skylar's too?
Yes, yeah, we're good, we're good on all. Thank you. Just those are important details. Um, Mark?
Uh, yeah, concerning graduation, I would, I would like to see us push it as far as we can do. Allow as many community members as possible. Vaccinations are out, kids are safe. Um, I, uh, at this point, it's, it sounds like it's unarguably up to, or not, it's not necessarily a health concern anymore. So, um, I think we should finish strong like Aaron was saying. Have a real graduation since it's not safe, safe to do so.
I can promise you, Mark, that we will, we will push it to the limit about how many people we can have there.
Thank you.
So, um, I really don't have any comments or anything to say. So, uh, with that, uh, no further. Steph?
Sorry. Yeah, um, just at our budget meeting, um, I became aware of Essar, which I guess I heard, but didn't know much about. And what popped into my head was, wouldn't that be great? If we could design that middle school campus we've all talked about over the years? So I don't know if that's something to think about, ponder on, or if it's even possible. But that might be the opportunity to take, using that funding, but. And then thanks again. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Stephanie.
It has not been an easy couple of years or whatever it has. So. No other comments, questions, uh?
I just want to thank the board again for unanimously approving the hiring of our new principal. Um, I have asked Diane to be responsible this summer for planning our summer school. She's already working with staff so that our new principal can focus on startup of the new year. And that will also allow them some transition time that we're going to need around procedures and processes and all of that. Um, but thanks. I, I, I'm thrilled that it's May 10th and we already know who our principal's going to be. Okay.
So you know, I, I knew the new principal long ago and I, I think it's a very good choice. And I'm super happy to work with them through the transition and, and, uh, I'm just delighted to hand it off to, to Jesse, Mr. Jackson.
Good.
That's awesome, Diane. You'll be masked.
Thank you, Stephanie. You too. It's been a long haul for both of us.
Yeah, it has been. Kisses.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Steph. Thanks, Aaron.
Yep. Thank you, Steve.